Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Counselor Stubbs?
Here.
Mayor Kentai?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this point, I'll ask everyone to please rise while Counselor Peterson leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Counselor Foster does the invocation. Counselor Peterson?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, God, for all the wonderful blessings you've bestowed upon Roswell. Be with our servicemen and women all around the world who are protecting us and giving us the freedoms that we have. Be with our police officers and our first responders as they keep us safe. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for the good of Roswell. In your son's name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the February 13th, 2020 Regular City Council Meeting to include the minutes from the January 9th, 2020 Regular City Council Meeting, also including on the consent agenda, four resol-- I want to sing, forgive me, four resolutions, three airport leases, three bid awards.[105.42][105.42](Laughter). One second posting and to remove Consent Item Number Six, which is the geo-funds for a mobile library, and place it on the regular agenda as Item 19A before the regular Item 19.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of Item Six being moved off the consent and becoming Item 19A. Is there any discussion or debate on the proposed agenda? Seeing none, I will ask for a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay.
Yeah, I'm not able to hear anybody but you.
Okay.
All right.
I'm trying to turn on, I'm trying to get the streaming on so I can hear it that way.
Okay, if you would still just go ahead and reply, I can hear you, okay?
Okay, so are we putting on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hold on just a moment, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, good reminder, if you have not already, please silence your cellphones. I'm probably the worst offender there about this. That's really the only informational thing I have to present. First item up is Item Number Three. Chief Graham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening. What I've been asked to do is give a quick down-and-dirty presentation on the Fire Department, kind of a Roswell Fire Department 101 for you. For the council members that have been here for longer than others, this may be a good review for you. But I've got a few things I want to cover and then we'll, I'll certainly stand for any questions.
It shows green. There we go. Is the IT department in the house?
Yes.
There we go. All right. Do what? Okay.
Well, then I will not. The Fire Department was founded in 1889. As most of you know, in 2019, we celebrated our 130th anniversary. This is the most widely-accepted story about the origins of the Fire Department, founded with eight volunteer firefighters that had 40 leather buckets and one 16-foot ladder. This has been passed down through the generations and it's the history that we claim to be ours.
Click.
Here's a chain of command, our command structure, our organizational chart. Obviously, the Fire Chief, and I've got one Deputy Chief and one Administrative Assistant. The Fire Marshal, who's got two Deputy Fire Marshals. We've got a Training Division Chief that oversees the training of the department and an EMS Division Chief who oversees all things EMS. Both of those two positions have many other responsibilities besides just training and EMS, but that's their primary responsibilities. To the left side there, you see the Shift Commander, the Battalion Chiefs, there's three of those, and I'll explain in just a minute, we operate three shifts, but those, that one column underneath the Shift Commander represents the bulk of our Fire Department. Currently, our current staffing is at 84 personnel. We've got eight vacancies when we're fully staffed, we're 92 total personnel, 91 uniformed. We are wrapping up a hiring process, finishing up background checks, physicals, and making offers to potential candidates, firefighter recruits. We are slated to start a Recruit Academy on February 28th, so here in just a couple of weeks. Our Recruit Academy differs from the Law Enforcement Academy in that we do our own, it's an in-house academy. We file all of our paperwork and run the classes through the state of New Mexico. Firefighter Training Academy over in Socorro that is overseen by the State Fire Marshal's Office, but as far as the actual execution of the academy and the teaching of the classes, we do that all ourselves. That's the responsibility of the Training Division Chief. He's a one-man show, so he relies heavily on the staff beneath him, the lieutenants and the drivers and the other seasoned firefighters to help teach that academy. And so, because we have to do that in-house, it has some advantages, some disadvantages. One of the advantages, we don't have to send them out of town for the 16 weeks that it takes to get through the academy, but then there is also an overtime cost affiliated with that because we are using our own instructors and our own employees. And so, it takes 16 weeks to get through the fire portion of the Training Academy and then an additional six weeks to do an in-house EMT class. We have an option to send them to the college to do the EMT class out there, which we have done in the past. The issue with that is that takes a full college semester in order to get somebody ready to be certified to be an EMT. So it's a little more efficient for us to do it in-house and we've got the instructors and so we're able to do that. On the combat side, like I said, we have three shifts, A, B, and C shift. Those guys work a 48-96 schedule, they're on for 48 hours at a time and then they're off for 96 at a time. So they work, they come to work and they're there for a minimum of two days. If they opt to work overtime or get in a holdover situation, they work longer. And so, this is, represents a third of their life, a third of their life that they spend at the fire station. They work a total of, on average, 2,920 hours a year, as opposed to a normal eight-to-five employee that works 2,080 hours. An interesting point on the 2,920 number, if you divide that number by 365, the number you'll get is eight. They work an equivalent to eight to 365, eight-hour days in a year. And so it's kind of interesting to look at it like that. And they truly do spend a minimum of a third of their life away from their family. As most of you know, we have six staff stations all over town strategically located that are staffed 24/7. We also have two support facilities. One of them is the Fire Marshal's Office down at Galen-Washington, the old Fire Station Five, and then the Training Center Station, we call it Station Seven, out at the Lewis-Jones Fire Training Center. That's where the bulk of our training takes place with respect to the Recruit Academies. We hold them there. It's a station, the only thing missing from that station is dorm rooms, we don't have dorm rooms built in there, but it gives the academy members, the recruits, an idea of what it's going to be like to report to a station. There's Fire Engine Station there and there's Classroom and those sorts of things. And it's in direct proximity with our training towers, so they're able to step out of the classroom, onto the training ground, and take care of the practical portion of the academy. Breakdown of our call volume, as you'll see from the charts there, the vast majority of our calls are EMS in nature, medical in nature. These are our statistics from 2019, a total of 9,228. Of those, 8,213 were EMS. And you can see the breakdown there. If you have any questions about that chart, I'll certainly entertain those questions, but they are fairly self-explanatory. Something that I find surprises people when we talk about it, we do have a big responsibility that we take care of in the county, outside of the city limits. Our assistance to the county is handled in a number of different ways. It's handled through some mutual aid agreements and automatic aid agreements. The county does pay an annual rescue fee to the city, we call it a rescue fee, that's the term within the budget of $25,000 a year on an annual basis. And so that's, that is what they, what they pay us for our services. As you can see from the chart there, nearly 12% of our call volume is outside of the city limits. Now, this also includes calls that are outside of Chavez County. It's not unusual for us to go north, going to Lincoln County, going north and going west, Guadalupe County, going north on the way to Vaughn, Eddie County going south, and Lee County going, going east. And so, when those calls for service out on the highways, when those calls are routed to our call center, we respond. Now, if it's, you know, way, way outside of our response area, our dispatch general will make an effort to contact Eddie County, Lee County, Tatum, whoever the closer agency is, but a lot of times, they're not available, they can't respond, a lot of those agencies are volunteer, and so we end up taking the call. We are a full-service Fire Department. We're an ISO Class II, and we can, you've heard me kind of give my spill on ISO in the past, I'll give you just a quick Reader's Digest version of it. ISO is the Insurance Services Office, rates Fire Departments all across the country, scale of one to 10, one being the best that you can be, 10 being, please find a Fire Department. They come in and when they do an evaluation, they look at the Fire Department, which includes a whole bunch of things, equipment, staffing, station layout, station deployment within the community, they look at the communication system, and they look at the water system, both production and distribution on the water side. Several years ago, we were in ISO III, through some efforts of the Fire Department and our great guys, we were able to get that lowered to an ISO II. We obviously have some improvements that could be made in all areas, you know, and we would have to make improvements to drop it to a one. We've got a great water distribution system, and so they scored very highly on that, as well as communication in the Fire Department, so we dropped it from a three to a two. Obviously, I stated that most of our calls are EMS in nature, we do have, offer ALS services in certain circumstances. In EMT world, there's three different levels, there's an EMT Basic, Intermediate, and Paramedic, and we have all three. We've got Basics, you have to be an EMT Basic to hold employment. We've got 40-plus Intermediates and getting close to 20 Paramedics on the department. And so, with those Paramedics, that gives us the flexibility and the ability to provide a higher level of care. We've, we're able to transmit via telemetry, EKGs from the field to the hospitals, which allows them to stand up their cath labs if necessary and reduce the door-to-cath lab time exponentially. Down there at the bottom, you'll, you'll see hazardous materials, rope rescue, vehicle extrication, technical rescue, all specialties within our business. You also see ARF, this is our Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting, these are the crews on the south end of town, obviously close to the airport. This is an FAA mandate that we have certifications and equipment to meet the Part 139 FAA mandate. And so, without meeting this mandate and these requirements, the commercial flights don't go. It's a requirement of the Federal Aviation Administration for us to, to meet these requirements or the American Airlines doesn't fly in or fly out. Obviously, with those specialties requires a tremendous amount of training and preparation. By and far, during the day when the guys aren't responding to calls, they're preparing. We've got, like I said, a training office that prepares uniform training for the entire department. When that's not going on, our leadership within the department, the company officers, the lieutenants are taking their guys out, performing training. We're preparing for a driver promotional exam right now, they're spending incredible amount of time preparing for that. And so, you can see the breakdown of the hours there from 2019, and this is just, this is the formal training that makes it into the record system, there's a lot of informal training that takes place that records aren't produced on. As I mentioned, we do have a Fire Marshal. He runs his own division, it's himself and two inspectors. They are a very specialized branch within the Fire Department, they do very specialized work. They have primarily two responsibilities, investigations and inspections, and there's a big difference. Investigations are when a fire or an incident occurs, and these are our professionals that go in to perform cause and determination activities at those scenes, figure out what started it, where did it start at, and those sorts of things. Versus inspections, these are the activities that take place at our local businesses to make sure that businesses are prepared and maintain what they need to in order to stay open, fire extinguishers, exit signs, those sorts of things. And also, obviously, reviewing plans, plans reviews, when somebody submits a set of plans for construction or renovation, to make sure that those plans meet the current adopted fire code. They're also very heavily involved in our public education during Fire Prevention Week and those sorts of times, they go into the schools and teach the kids about fire safety and fire prevention. We're very active in the public outreach arena. I think most of you know this, you see us at a lot of different events and a lot of different activities, and we do make time for this. This is something that's important to us as a department, to go spend that time primarily with the younger demographic, the younger kids, and let them see the big red truck and spray the water hose and do the fun things. You know, we do this for a number of reasons. Obviously, we want to build that trust and that rapport with the kiddos, but, you know, we also acknowledge the fact that those kids could be, you know, 13 years from now, 12, 10 years from now, could be sitting in the seat back here wearing, wearing the badge and the uniform, and so we do it for a number of reasons. The last slide that I have is Opportunities and Visions, which Opportunities, I think, is just a more politically acceptable way to say Challenges. I'll own that. We do have multiple vacancies within the middle ranks at the driver position. We are working and have been working to address this, and we will continue to, to work to address it until we get it taken care of. You've heard me, all of you have heard me give my spill on the ambulance transport service. I think this is something that we continue to pursue, look into, and when the time is right, make the investment into. I know that there are many projects that compete for general fund money, but I think this is a project that needs to very heavily be looked at. If the Fire Department, you know, for a number of reasons. We hold our guys to a very high standard, and we adhere, that, that, the service that we provide and the standard that we adhere to, I think would reflect very well in the transport service. Additionally, if the Fire Department's ever going to pull its own train in the general fund, that is the only way that we would ever do it. And then, I won't get too deep into the building improvements, I think everybody's pretty well aware of that, but in addition to what is very publicly known right now, there are plenty of other improvements that need to be made at several of our facilities within, within the department and across town. So with that, I'll say thank you and I will stand for any questions.
All right. Counselors, any questions, comments for Chief Graham?
Counselor Best?
Yeah, I have a comment. I think I got a little bit of a wrong number, but kind of, close enough. I want the public to understand that when we work with the county, we do it because we love it, because with the numbers I got, it equals each run you take to the county is $15.56. That's when we go out into the county and help the county with whatever they do, it's I believe Barry has $21.57, so that's just a little bit of a difference, but we do it from our heart. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Chief, thank you very much, and thank you to your guys.
I've got the best, I guarantee you.
I know. When's the next combat challenge?
I don't know. We can set it up whenever you're ready.
(laugh) I might be past that. All right. Moving on, Item Number Four. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing, so therefore I move to hold a public hearing and vote on a restaurant beer, wine, beer and wine liquor license with a premises-only consumption. Application Number 1134790. This is Eli's Bistro Incorporated doing business as Eli's Bistro and Bakery located at 3109 North Main Street, Roswell.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to have a public hearing and vote on a restaurant beer and wine liquor license for Eli's Bistro and Bakery, 3109 North Main Street. Mr. Holloman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Somebody had the microphone way up. What we're asking now is for you to hold a quasi-judicial hearing. That means that you're being asked to consider the facts that are presented in front of you in order to address the question of whether or not this issuance of the liquor license meets three specific qualifications. Next slide, please. The three things that you would be asked to consider is, number one, whether the proposed location is prohibited, the sale of alcohol's prohibited at that location; number two, whether or not it would constitute an ordinance or a zoning violation; and number three, whether or not the issuance of this specific license would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and morals. This application is a new issuance of a beer and wine license for service on premises only. This would be at 3109 North Main. Next slide, please. This, this image shows the distances. As you may or may not know, the alcohol may not be served within 300 feet of a school or a church or a military facility, and this shows you the distances. The teal, and the teal or turquoise in the middle shows the 300-foot radius, so we do not believe that there are any of those facilities within that range. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel, as this is a public hearing, I will now see if there's anyone here from the public wishing to speak on this. Ladies and gentlemen, even if you did not sign up to speak on this matter, this is an opportunity for you to speak. If you are in opposi-- is anyone here in opposition to this matter? Sir, why don't you go ahead and state your name and address?
Yes, Gerald Thomas, I'm the owner of Eli's Bistro and Bakery.
Okay, so you're in support?
Yes.
Okay, let me, let me see if there's anybody in opposition first, okay?
Just hang tight, go ahead.
Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition? Let the record reflect, no one spoke in opposition. All right. If there's anyone who wishes to speak in support, all right, sir, this is your opportunity to come forward. I apologize, but we need to get this on the record that we've made the effort to hear from everybody. So go ahead and state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Just wanted to put a face to Eli's Bistro and Bakery and thank everyone for their support. We've been there for, serving the community for eight years. This is our opportunity to, again, offer something to go with our menu, and if there's any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of this application? All right. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this matter in any way, shape, or form? Okay, let the record reflect, no one else chose to come forward and speak. Counselors, questions, comments from the council? I see none. Since this is a public hearing on a liquor license, I'll ask for a roll call vote on this one. And please activate your voting box at the time that your name is called. Miss Call, please call, oh, yes or aye approves the liquor license application, a no or nay rejects it. Miss Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Canard?
Yes.
Counselor Ropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Counselor Robek?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Eight to one, motion passes.
Thank you. Next up, I am number five. Counselor Stubbs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to hold a public hearing and vote on a Proposed Ordinance 20-03, amending Section 15-2 of the Roswell City Code, governing compensation for the municipal judge.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to approve Proposed Ordinance 20-03, increasing, to amend the section on municipal judge compensation. Mr. Holloman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Ordinance 20-03 addresses the judge salary for the municipal judge for the city of Roswell. This is, salary is established by our own ordinance, and it's currently set at $60,000. The proposed ordinance would do two things. Number one, it would make an immediate raise to that from $60,000 to $70,000. And the second thing that it would do is that it would provide for set increases over time according to the scheme set out for compensating all the other judges throughout the state. The reason that we're bringing it to you now is that we are not permitted to increase a salary during the term of an elected official's current term. So in order for this to take place for the judge coming on after the March election, we would need to pass it at this time. And just for your own interest, the way that the ordinance reads specifically is that it says that it's 80, it would be set at 80% of a magistrate court judge's salary. The way that the statutory scheme is, is that the legislature funds the Supreme Court judges, justices' salaries, and then each descending tier has a percentage of the one above it. So the Supreme Court salary for the fiscal year 2020 is $148,000. A magistrate court going down the chain is $95,000. So if my math is correct, that would, were the change, according to that scheme, to take place, not today, in four years it would take effect, it would be $76,241.42. So that, just to give you an idea of what the range is. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holloman. As this is a public hearing on a proposed ordinance, once again, I will go to the audience. Ladies and gentlemen, even if you did not sign up to speak on this matter, you may do so at this time. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of Proposed Ordinance 20-03? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Let the record reflect, no one chose to speak in opposition. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in support of Proposed Ordinance 20-03? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Let the record reflect, no one chose to come forward to speak in support. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter at all? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Let the record reflect, no one chose to come forward to speak in support. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter at all? Anyone at all? Let the record reflect, no one chose to come forward and speak on this matter. Counselors, questions, comments for Mr. Holloman? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll, uh, roll call vote. A yes or I approves proposed ordinance twenty dash zero three, a no or nay rejects proposed ordinance twenty dash zero three. Once again, a yes or I approves, a no or nay rejects. Miss Call, please call the roll.
Counselor Peterson?
No.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Kennard?
Yes.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Best?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Robach?
Yes.
Counselor Henderson?
Yes.
Counselor Stubbs?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Uh, we have a couple have not pushed their button. Henderson and Foster, if you'll activate your--
Good call now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are we losing Counselor Robach?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Counselor Robach signed off at--
Six thirty-four. All right. Next, ladies and gentlemen, items on the agenda packet that you received, if you picked one up, item seven through eighteen were under the consent agenda and were adopted when the agenda was approved. Item number six was removed from the consent agenda and is now item nineteen A and will be heard next. Counselor Stubbs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is at the recommendation of the General Services Committee with a vote of four to zero. I move to approve the use of library general obligation funds to purchase a mobile library service bookmobile.
All right. I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Moore. Touch it one more time, Counselor. There we go. And a second by Counselor Moore to approve a mobile library service vehicle. Mr. Fuentes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. So the mobile library service vehicle is basically a model that allows the Roswell Library to go beyond the walls of the library. This allows the opportunity for a mobile library to be located throughout the city to provide the services in the community. A bookmobile is basically a customized van or truck that is equipped with the ability to carry books and carry, and other materials to the different sites. The New Mexico Administrative Code does recognize a bookmobile as, as an allowable use for the, for this program. So a, a traveling branch library, as it carries the collection of materials to different sites, it will be staffed by paid staff currently onboard, and it will have regularly scheduled hours. Now, this program and this vehicle will be purchased through state of New Mexico issued general obligation bonds. So this is state bonds, state money that is awarded to the Roswell Public Library. So I just wanted to make that very clear. And with us today is Enid Costley, our librarian, to answer any additional questions or provide additional information you may have, may request. Thank you.
Ma'am, you want to make a few statements before we go to the council? You can, you can do that.
No.
Okay. I'm sorry. All right. I have Counselor Henderson and then Counselor Best. Counselor Henderson, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your work at the library, and we're proud of our public library. I'm interested in kind of knowing how this is going to work, and I would assume that you've decided that the priority for your state funding can be used in this way, and it obviously is a high priority project for the library and, and staff. I'm curious about, you know, what kind of a budget, how you're going to staff it, if you can only, if you can get away with only using one person, or you have to maybe have two in the vehicle when you're providing services outside of the, the building of the library building. At any rate, I'm just kind of curious as to how this is all going to work, and if you can give us some examples of people that are successful with this type of operation.
First, I want to recognize that you were at the opening and were, um, sorry, that you helped with building the library that we have. I just wanted to recognize that. And this could be, you know, another opportunity. So the funding for this is coming from general bonds that are voted on every two years by everyone in the, in the state of New Mexico. Of those general bonds, some of those monies goes to the schools, some goes to NIMI, some goes to the universities, and some go to the public libraries and the tribal libraries. So we are using first the rest of our, our two thousand and sixteen geo bond money, which we have thirty-one thousand, six hundred, twenty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Let's not forget the twenty-seven cents. The project costs more than that, and I've already talked to the state library, librarian, and we can then tap into the two thousand and eighteen geo bond money that has been recently released to the library. So that is one hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and seventy cents that we have access to. So that's how we're going to be paying for the van. We're looking at a generator to put in there. We are looking at a hotspot so that when we go to a location that doesn't have internet service, we can provide internet service to the community. We are also having, excuse me, as I look at my notes, and I can't find it. It would also include book carts in that cost because the bookmobile is, is not your typical, what you might think of as a great big huge mobile van. It is what is called a sprinter van. We are modeling after what has been done by the Henrico Library System and other library systems. I've attended a bookmobile conference in Virginia and listened to a presentation, and they talked about moving from a great big huge van where people go into it to a sprinter van where you have a Tommy gate that comes down, you take the carts out, and you take them to the location. So the only people that are going into the van are library staff members. They also, we're going to have an awning off of it so that we can set up a table so that we can be at some of the community events to, for this. So I've answered part of your questions, but could you repeat your question again? What have I missed?
Well, I just, I, staffing, you're going to use existing staffing for the van?
We, we have a position that we have kept open. We had a cataloguer that received a degree in child, in family counseling, and so after she got her degree, she left the library, and at that point, we were looking at what we would do with that position, and we have been keeping that position open for the outreach librarian. So it's an outreach, twenty, at least twenty hours of outreach, and then some planning time, and then also working within the library and the reference department. So it's an outreach library position, and we have advertised that at the, several school libraries.
So it's my understanding that the funding that you need and will use is the bond money from the state, and that you're not going to request any general fund money from the city?
I will be asking for some general fund money to pay for insurance, for, for fuel, and for a cellphone for the librarian. We don't want to leave her, leave the person stranded. I have figured out how to do that within the budget that I have, because I understand that I will get a, that a zero increase in budget. So I have figured that out.
Okay. Well, I think, I think that answers my question. I just, when I first read the abstract, I wasn't quite sure that the funding was the state library bond money, but then if, if you and your staff think that this is a project that is sustainable with the funding that is obviously coming every two years from the state, I'm happy with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have Counselor Best and Counselor Oropesa. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
I have just a few questions. Does the Friends of the Library, they have a van, right?
No, they do not.
I thought they went to the nursing homes and delivered books.
They do have what's called a Books on Wheels program, but they use their own vehicles.
Okay. My next question is, these are going to be books that we check in and out, so are you going to do a consistent schedule to each of these areas?
That depends.
Or are they giveaway?
No. They would be checked out from the, checked out from the van. That is one of the reasons why we need to have a, a mobile hotspot so that we can use our computers, but they would be checked out from the van. There are some other models in which they load up a van with books, and then they just, they don't quite, they don't quite catalog them and, but they load them out, and if, if someone loans out two books, and then they come back with two books, they get two more books. And they usually do that with children, with young children, but these would be library books that would be checked out.
I, I'm, I assume, I know you're going to work it out because I believe in you, but just some of the people that can't, they're homebound and they can't get out, you know, I don't want them to get library fines for not bringing them back, so, just a thought. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I have Counselor Oropesa, and that completes my list. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just need a clarification following up in the same lines that Counselor Henderson was. Is the, the funding from the state, from the state bonds, do they get renewed every two years? Do you get money every two years from those bonds, or do they ever run out, or? Can you address that?
The public, the public votes on them every two years. So if the, if the public does not approve the geo bond money, but they tend to do it because it doesn't increase, there's no increase in taxes for this, for this particular geo bond money, if, but it is voted on every two years. So is it guaranteed? No.
But more, more than likely, they'll, they'll pass every, every time. But in, in the case that they don't, I mean, that, that's a big if.
Yes.
Would the program die, or would you come to the city council for funding, or how would you work it?
The program would continue as long as the vehicle continues. When the vehicle dies, then I would hope that the geo bond program is still in place, and that we would then use geo bond money, library geo bond money to replace the vehicle.
And that, this particular vehicle would be under the maintenance of the city, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. At this point, I have no one else wishing to speak on this matter, no questions. I will ask for a voice vote. A yes or I approves the use of general obligation funds for the purchase of a mobile library service vehicle, a no or nay rejects it. Once again, a yes or I approves the use of state general obligation funds for the purchase of a mobile library service vehicle. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. We have a couple who haven't quite voted yet. Counselor Stubbs, there we go. And it passes eight to one. Actually, we have two absent. Eight to zero, I'm sorry. Thank you. Passes eight zero with two absent. All right. Next up is item number nineteen. It's the Counselor Stubbs show tonight.
But this is the last one. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this is at the recommendation of the General Services Committee at a vote of four to zero, that I move to authorize the city manager to implement a bike rental program for the Roswell Recreation and Adult Center.
I have a motion by Counselor Stubbs and a second by Counselor Foster to authorize the city manager to enter into a, to set up a bike rental program at the Roswell Recreation and Aquatic Center. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. Last year, the Spring River Foundation initiated discussions with General Services Committee concerning a possible bike rental program at the Recreation and Aquatic Center. On August twenty-eighth of last year, Marcus Gallegos, the recreation manager, presented the program and some deep, but there were requests for additional details, and also a determination from the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund as to whether or not they would insure that program. On December second, Kathy Hennessy from the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund met with staff for a site visit and to discuss the details of the program. Ms. Hennessy determined that the proposed program was reasonable and could be included in our existing policy for a small fee. The General Services Committee, Committee did vote four zero to recommend approval of the program at their meeting on January twenty, twenty-second. This time, I would ask Marcus Gallegos to come up and give some additional details of the program.
Mr. Mayor, Council, some of the details of the program, again, the Spring River Corridor Foundation is agreeing to donate ten bikes and several helmets for the program. They've also agreed to pay for maintenance for the bikes for up to two years of the program. So very generous offer for them to begin this program. This is a pilot program. We plan on running it from May to October to see how it works. We will be running the bikes out of the Recreation Aquatic Center. We do have the adequate space to store the bikes and, and, and have a, have a nice safe place for them so they don't get stolen. And we'll be utilizing the existing bike walking path at Sierra Grande. There's, there's two, there's a, a smaller one right around the grass, and then a bigger one that goes around kind of the whole complex. Like, like Juan said, we did have, do a site visit. We took Kathy Hennessy all the way around, around the path. She was very, very comfortable, so it's a nice, safe, secure place for everybody to ride. We will charge a very small nominal five dollars for two hours rental of the bikes. We'll charge two dollars for each additional hour if they want to stay out a little bit longer. You must be eighteen years old or older to rent the bikes. Children must be accompanied by paying adults. And continuation of the program will be decided in October or after an evaluation of the program, consumer feedback, demand feedback, and staff recommendations. At this time, I stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you. I believe there might be some individuals here from the Spring River Corridor--
Yes, they are. Two individuals.
Foundation? You want to stand up and identify yourselves? Come on up, because you might have to answer some questions. There's only one of you?
I, I've been being a wuss. Bob Edwards, twelve, twelve, west, seventh, oh positive. Yes, I'm a, on the board of directors for the Spring River Corridor Foundation, which as you all know, runs from the zoo to Enchanted Lands Park. Sally Toles was the one that brought this idea to, she's also a member, and we've, we've worked with the city to get this program initiated, and we hope that it'll come to fruition tonight with your support. One, one a little, one small aside, if I may, we did also, as a companion piece to this, suggest that Sierra Grande and Spring River Corridor be joined through the area down there by the Bird Sanctuary. And our, our constitution, if you will, only allows us to, to look at the Spring River Corridor, but we're interested in doing work in front of the new aquatic center with some statuary and things like that, but-- But unfortunately, until those two, until those two trails are joined, we are limited to help with community projects along those lines. So, if you would consider that at some point down the road, we would appreciate it.
Why don't you go, why don't you go ahead and identify the quiet ones in the back there for the record that are part of your foundation?
Well, it's Ivan Hall and Jane Ann, who's the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay.
Which they approved this in August of 2018 to unanimously to get this going, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right. Counselors, any questions or comments on this? Counselor Henderson, you have the floor.
Well, I think this is a great idea and I'm pleased to see that we're going to run it as a pilot. I would assume you're going to need a helmet for every bicycle because everybody's going to ride, wear a helmet. But there might be some that rent a bike that already have a helmet, but very few. So, I just, I would assume that you're going to have a helmet for every bike.
Yes. We initially, we are purchasing 10 bicycles and we're going to have them put together by the new bike shop. Stellar Coffee is going to have a bike facility down there and they're going to assemble the bikes for us. They're coming in from San Diego. These are those green beach bikes that you would see on the, on the sand. And the helmets, Jane Ann was most cooperative in getting 20 helmets from the New Mexico Brain, Traumatic Brain Injury Association. So, the helmets are in my garage, so I know we have them. And so, we're, we're ready to go.
Good. My other question was the, there's a statement here on the maintenance of the bikes and the inspection of the bikes.
Right.
And when I went to, on the telephone book to see where a bike repair shop might be, there was one on Walden, I think, but they wouldn't answer their phone.
No, that one's been gone for quite a while, Mr. Henderson. And there is, there was one right across on Richardson near the fire station, but that one's also closed. But there's a fellow down at, I believe his name is David, I could be wrong, at Stellar Coffee, who's going to open in the back of a bike shop. And we already discussed with him about a year, 17 months ago, if he would be willing to take on the chore of any required maintenance. And then the foundation said we would step up and take care of that for a period of two years.
I see. Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I have Counselor Stubbs and then Counselor Best. That exhausts my list. Counselor Stubbs, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say how much I personally appreciate the Corridor Foundation stepping up and doing this. This was totally initiated by them. They saw a need. They, they figured out how to get it implemented and I'm just really pleased to see, to thank people that do just that. They, they take the initiative and they do it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. It's, it's another quality of life situation, so.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Counselor Best, you have the floor.
My question, insurance. What's our liability, Mr. Aaron? He's like, oh, I'll wake up.
Usually, I have to kind of just give you generalizations about what our liability is. Luckily, we've actually gone to our insurer and discussed it. So, we do have a very small increase in our premium, but, and I think the reason that this works from a liability perspective is that the pilot program will be limited just to the loops. So, you're not having to cross any roads, you're not having to drive by any other cars. So, the, to the extent that our insurer is on board and will insure us, I think that the city should be comfortable with moving forward with that.
Okay. And Mr. Gallegos, I assume that we're getting a copy of their driver's license and a release form?
Oh, go ahead. Mark? Yes. Part of the pilot program is, we will, they'll have a valid driver's license, credit card and sign a rental agreement and waiver to rent the.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. This exhausts my list. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? If not, I will ask for a voice vote. A yes or a aye authorizes the city manager to enter into a pilot program for bike rental at the Roswell Recreation and Aquatic Center. A no or nay rejects it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, seeing none. Eight to zero with two absent. And I, at this point, I don't, we had no one sign up for public participation. You didn't sign up, Larry. Sorry.
He didn't think we'd be done this early.
I know. Mr. Neb, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back.
You bet. Mayor, city council, just, I have about four slides on here. I wanted to cover the city manager or city administration directive on the temporary signage again because there seems to be some questions and everything coming up on this. This is in our current city code. This is the Article 60 for the signs, section two, on prohibited signage. And so, these are all the classifications of what is prohibited to be placed for temporary signage. What I want to attract your attention to is number eight, that prohibited signs are within rights of way or easements. And that was a little bit problematic because of our method of managing these temporary signage have been to allow individuals to place them in the right of way, especially in, I've got a picture up here for one of the, in the downtown areas to show you exactly what that challenge is because we have such wide right of ways there that we have signs placed in our right of way all the time for temporary signage. And so, what, what staff was doing is they were using a more common sense approach and allowing signs to be placed out there in the rights of way for certain uses. As we talked about this with staff, we talked a lot about what the prohibition is for and it's predominantly for the health and safety concerns. And so, we, we've kind of, we amended the, the language of this because we did not want to take away anybody's opportunity for their voice to be heard through the signs because right there says that there should be no signs on city right of way. And so, since we haven't been following that, that hasn't been our practice. We established some additional information on that. But like I said, the staff used the common sense approach. They allowed it on, on certain city rights of way and in some cases, on rights of ways contiguous to city property. Some of those areas have been out on Sycamore, in the Cielo Grande area and everything. And so, rather than, rather than restrict one, I don't really have the manpower to go and do, be sign police for the most part. So, the idea was to, unless it has an issue with health and safety, then we will, we'll address it this way. But, so we got stuck in that. My directive to the staff was based so that if anybody had an issue, it would not be with staff, it would be with the city manager. So, that was the intent of putting that out there. But here's an example of a, of a house that's downtown. I think it's on Pennsylvania and you see the sign out there in the right of way. That is prohibited signage. That is really not supposed to be there. I don't think the intent was to not allow that house to be sold. And so, the idea was is that we would allow them in there. And you can tell, the large part of the problem we have is with these wide right of ways. And so, we have these large parkways and so there's no, if you put the sign, it's 20 foot up there, right next to the driveway. And so, the idea was is that we would take a little bit different common sense approach and so we would allow for these, these things. Well, along with this, and we would allow them onto the city right of way for, until city council can consider this and look and see if there's any other options. I did, I did lay out these other four, five classifications. Contiguous property owners have specific rights and responsibilities related to those sideways, sidewalks, parkways and rights of way. So, we did extend that, that ability for the temporary signage as well, too. So, if a property owner doesn't want a sign placed in that right of way that's contiguous to their property, they have every right to remove it. A three-foot circle has been enacted around each fire hydrant for emergency access. We don't want any signs getting in the way of our ability to hook up water lines and to respond. Signs located at an intersection and ingress shall not create a visible hazard for vehicular and pedestrian traffic. What it talks about is the site triangle. And when we first looked at this, the site triangle is essentially 25 foot from each, from the corner. So, it's a triangle that goes off 25 foot on either side and what it did was, if you look at downtown as to how many driveways we have, there would be no signage in the, in the downtown area again because of the number of site triangles we have from a driveway coming out on the street and the corners and all of that. So, so we said that as long as it doesn't create a visibility hazard, then we would allow them there. No signs may be placed in the right of way on certain city properties for reasons that include the election laws. So, no sign should be located within that 100-foot range of a voting center or any of those things. And so, that's where we kind of left it at. There is no permit required for the temporary signage. And so, when the election started, we made sure that all the candidates were aware of how we would manage this. And I know that we, I continue to get some questions on this. And so, I just wanted to make sure I had opportunity with all of you here because I really hope that the city council takes this issue up after we can, after you have time to really look at that and take some of these pieces in there. I looked at Rio Rancho's today and it actually has a whole section on temporary signage and that it is allowed on a contiguous property owner's right of way with their permission. And so, there's a lot of good language out there in order to help close this gap. But with the, with regards to getting that done within a cycle for this election and not causing my people to pull their hair out, this is why I've done what I've done. So, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Neb? I don't see any, Mr. Neb.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I have 704. Nothing else. We are adjourned.